Six forty, um, we'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Moyer?
Present.
McCaffrey? White House?
Here.
DeSenta?
Here.
Chalet?
Present.
Knack?
Here.
Sardar?
Here. Any additions or deletions from the agenda?
No additions or deletions. Um, Chairman, did I understand that, um, Commissioner McCaffrey had sent in a an excused absence for this evening?
He has, yes.
Thank you. We'll, we'll note that for the, for the record.
All right. Um, any public comments on non-agenda items tonight? Anybody want to say anything that's regarding anything not on the agenda? Okay, no public comment. Do a consideration of minutes? Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from August?
Going to abstain.
Motion first.
Actually, I have a quick correction. On in the packet on page five, the paragraph that starts with mullet explained. As you go down on the fourth line, there's a it looks like it's probably just an editing error says with the zoning being C three, then the L, uh, L one or LI. I think that part just needs to be deleted out because it's, I think it's inconsistent with what was written before it. Do you see what I'm talking about?
I, I do see that. I, I believe you're correct that it was intended to be deleted. I think in the, as I recall, in the conversation, there was kind of a run on sentence and we tried to reflect the substance. So we can clean up that editing for sure.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, with the noted correction, do I have a motion to approve the me, the minutes from August?
I motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Roll call, please.
Somebody second?
I need a second.
I thought, sorry, Gary. I thought Gary was second and you guys both spoke at the same time. My apologies. Roll call.
Commissioner Moyer?
I abstain.
White House?
Yes.
DeSenta?
Yes.
Chalet?
Yes.
Knack?
Yes.
Sardar?
Yes. Okay, new business tonight. Um, we've got a public hearing. We have an applicant that would like to make some remarks. Um, Mr. Bird, I generally start with you for these. Would you like to give us a quick introduction on the, uh, on the public hearing tonight?
Excuse me, can I make a comment before he starts?
Sure.
I read on page nine of sixteen, it says, it is possible that not all site requirements for the C two zoning district can be satisfied. Parking, landscaping, et cetera. So I'd like to make a motion. We table this issue until we see that these requirements can be met.
You have, you have a motion on the table to, to table this. Um, it is a public hearing request, um, on a, on a public hearing because of our advertisement responsibilities, we would need to have a date certain for that tabling. Um, you have a I think October third is the next available planning commission meeting regularly scheduled. There would also possibly need some time requirements for those uh, requirements to be drawn and submitted. Do you have a recommendation for your motion? Commissioner DeSenta?
I would just go with our next regular meeting. October third.
Okay. Um, I would ask the, the applicant if, if the motion passes, would October third give you adequate time to prepare site plans and submit and have staff time to review, which I didn't, you know, for a staff review of those comments, a three week turnaround would be awfully tight under any circumstance for a staff review and not let alone for the applicant to prepare those drawings. Do we potentially the following? Um, November, I don't have that date. October.
Then that's the following.
It'd be, it'd be November. I'll check here. November seventh would be perhaps a more realistic timeframe for drawings and staff review and to, to resubmit for a new report.
I would agree with that.
Okay, so the, the motion on the table is to table the agenda item to November seventh of twenty twenty-two for the regular planning commission meeting to be held at six thirty here at the Wilson Leaper Center, thirty-eight hundred Wilson Avenue.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Do we have to second it to have a conversation?
Once you second it, it's vote.
Well, I would rather talk about it first. Can we do that?
But there's a motion on the floor, so we do need to.
And, and just a point of clarification on a, when there's a motion on the table, um, it would require a, a second and then there can be discussion on that. Um, so.
That's what I'm saying. Like I'll second it if there's a conversation before a vote.
And keep in mind that each member will still be able to vote.
A point of information, I mean, once you second it, doesn't it go to a vote and then a discussion or am I missing something here?
Why? I was gonna say typically there is discussion allowed, um, on a motion. There's only a few motions that would go straight to a vote. Um, but if you give me a moment, I will clarify in our, our handy dandy, uh, manual here. For a prime motion, it is debatable. So when it, when a motion is debatable, it requires a motion and a second to initiate the debate and then the debate occurs. And at the close of the debate, then there, you move on to the voting requirements.
I'm definitely very confused. I since there's a, I, I understand a motion on the table, so it kind of seems like things stop. But we haven't yet even approached what we're discussing yet as far as page nine. And I don't know what we're motioning on page nine to table this.
I, my.
So I, I have to say I'm very in this conversation, I guess.
Mm-hmm. I, I think I can add some, some clarity, um, or I'll, I'll attempt. The when a motion is made, um, in order for it to be debatable, uh, needs a second. If there's not a second, the motion fails. And then you move on to the next order of business. Does that help?
And point of information, one of our options at the end of this is actually to continue the hearing. But that's different than tabling.
Slightly, but the, in these circumstances, tabling or continuing the hearing would be the same at this point because we've not opened or closed the public hearing. So the motion would likely should technically be amended to say that, that the public hearing is continued to that later date, whereas tabling, it would be possible for the commission to simply table the discussion to a later date after a public hearing is held and closed. But we have not held an hour of testimony, so we can't can't continue the public hearing without opening the public hearing.
Can I hear the motion again?
The motion, the, the motion wa, the motion on the table is to table the agenda item for the rezone request um, for a portion of lots or for lot one in the north fifteen feet of lot two, Wellington. Had I, sorry, had I had a little bit of heads up on this, I could have been better prepared to speak to this. This is a little, I'm caught a little off guard here. The motion on the table was to table the public hearing for a rezone of lot one and north fifteen feet of lot two, block nine, Wellington Place First Subdivision from Light Industrial District to C two downtown core commercial district. Tabling to the November seventh meeting of the planning commission twenty twenty-two to be held at six thirty PM here at the Wilson Leaper Center at thirty-eight hundred Wilson Avenue.
And my reason for asking that is because of one of the comments from the city.
We're getting into deliberation and you've already made your prime motion. So I, there's if we're going to follow the meeting procedures, we should follow the meeting procedures.
So it if the motion is to table, if it gets a second and we vote to table, Lisa, there is no discussion. It ends, meeting's over. I'll move through the rest of the agenda items and we close. This doesn't get brought up again until November. Correct, Cody? Correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct. It would require a second to debate it. If there's not a second, then the motion fails.
We proceed with public hearing tonight.
Correct.
So I'll call again for a second to the motion that's on the floor. No second, motion fails. Okay, sorry for the delay there, fellows. Uh, we will move forward with the public hearing tonight. Um, again, Mr. Bird, if you'd like to make any comments here before the applicants get started.
Um, I'd like to kind of lead with a little bit of background information, um, going over our public hearing procedures. Um, and some, some context here. Let me see if I can switch screens on the Zoom call. The stop that window and share this one. So I handed this out to the planning commissioners at the bench. Um, and I wanted to throw it up here on the screen as well. But what I've got here, if I can get the Zoom to work, is our public hearing procedures. Um, so we begin with uh, disclosure of any conflicts of interest or, and ex parte communications, ex parte communications being um, any information that commissioners have received outside of tonight's meeting that might influence or change your, your opinion of this, of this application. And you disclose that information so that all the commissioners have the same information to consider, um, and during tonight's hearing. Um, I'll provide a brief staff introduction relative to the case and share some, uh, site maps and exhibits, et cetera. Um, and then, uh, the applicant, in this case, uh, Mr. Robert Luhann, um, will have an opportunity to share any additional information um, that the applicant would like to, to share as part of their request. And if you have any general questions concerning the presentations, we can answer those at that time. Um, we'll then open a public hearing. Um, this is an opportunity for residents, community members to come to the podium, share their name and address and, um, express their, their communications regarding this rezone request. Um, when there are no more public comments, the public comment portion will be closed. And then the applicant will have an opportunity to come up and address any of the public comments made. Staff will also have an opportunity to make any closing comments relative to what was heard. And then we'll turn it over to the commission for questions, deliberation and, uh, going through your findings for approval. Um, your findings for approval are outlined in your staff report. The findings are the basis uh, for your recommendation. On a rezone case, the planning commission makes a recommendation that's forwarded to the board of trustees. Um, and the board of trustees takes final action on a rezone. Um, so that's the kind of the general order of the, the meeting steps. Any questions on the procedures that we'll be following? Okay. Then at this time, um, we go back to the start. I would recommend starting with conflicts of interest and then we'll move on to ex parte communications.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. Does anyone have any conflicts of interest before we get started on this public hearing tonight?
I need to disclose that I know the applicant socially. I have not spoke with him on this subject. We have, again, talked at, uh, meals and things like this, but I've not discussed this. Have no financial relationship with this individual. And I don't believe this will impact my ability to make a decision on this subject.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Whitehouse. Anyone else?
Yeah, I want to disclose that I actually did get notification as I am a, um, neighbor, a business neighbor of the applicant and I too actually do not know the applicant. And when I read the notice that I got, I went, oh, okay, guess this is what we're talking at the planning commission. So I too don't believe it's going to affect my decision making, but I did want to uh, make that noted that they are across the street neighbors from us at the automotive repair shop.
Mr. Bird, and just to clarify on our end as well, any concerns with either of the disclosures?
Uh, no, not from the staff standpoint. Uh, if, if both commissioners have, have disclosed those relationships and their proximity to the site and they, both of them stated that it doesn't impact their ability to hear and, and weigh and make an objective uh, decision on the, on the rezone request. So that, that is sufficient from staff standpoint.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Bird. Um, any ex parte communications as well? Okay. We will go ahead and turn it back over to town staff, uh, for their introduction, the presentation. Mr. Bird?
Thank you, Chairman. Going to switch yet again. Nope, that didn't work. Sorry. Here we go. Um, so just by way of, of, uh, orientation, um, this particular rezone request is um, relative to an existing developed property along Cleveland Avenue at the corner of Cleveland and First Street. Um, it's the, the request is to rezone um, a portion of the already developed property from uh, LI Light Industrial to C two downtown core commercial district. Um, the star there is the general location. And then you can see on the, this is the existing zoning map. Little small there. Zoom in a little bit. Um, but this, this site is, is here at Cleveland and First Street. Um, it's between first and the railroad tracks. The existing developed property that, that the applicant, uh, Mr. Robert Luhann owns um, is seven platted lots. Those lots were platted, uh, long ago in nineteen oh three, um, as part of the original town of Wellington plat. Um, the existing site has been developed with all of those lots in one unified ownership and consists of um, two primary structures, one on the, the north end, which is the subject of tonight's rezone request. And then the south building, um, is proposed to be left, uh, zoned LI Light Industrial for the existing light industrial businesses that are currently leasing space in that commercial building. There's also, um, a, an outdoor storage area, um, associated with those, those light industrial uses. Next time, I think I'm going to put all these documents into one one easy screen. But here's a, here's an, oops, it didn't share. And that's why we're going to rethink this next time. There it is. Um, this is, uh, an aerial photograph of the existing site. So the, the subject of the request is to to rezone this, this north building and the area between to C two downtown core commercial. The south building and the outdoor storage yard to the south um, are proposed to remain with the LI Light Industrial. The, the applicant is proposing to, um, to convert this e- existing structure for, uh, residential purposes. Um, this is actually, and I want to be, you know, fully candid, full disclosure. Um, the primary reason why the applicant and town staff are having conversations about the zoning of this property, um, the town became aware of some conditions, uh, inside the building that we did some investigation into. Um, and we contacted the property owner with a, a notice of condemnation for the particular uses that were taking place inside that building for the residential component. Um, due to building permit requirements and building code requirements, the structure was found to be unsafe primarily because of the nature of the construction. And there are some significant factors that, that need to be addressed, but the, the building code requirements are separate and isolated from the zoning request, except for the timing, which in communications with, with Mr. Luhann, um, for, for good reason and staff understands before they proceed with any of the, um, building modifications that might be needed to bring the structure into compliance, they want to make sure that they have an adequate zoning to support their desired uses before investing additional capital to modify the building. Um, so I, I think that that's an important nuance and we wanted to make sure that that was well understood so that, you know, we're not, we don't have information that the planning commission doesn't have access to. Um, but the, the nature of the condemnation proceedings, which the applicant's been very communicative on um, and is working through those channels. We just have a timing component and the zoning compliance is something that has to happen first. Um, so that's where we're at tonight with the rezone request. Um, staff did acknowledge in the staff report and we think that it is w- worthy of consideration that the existing site having been laid out and platted, uh, well over a hundred years ago, developed at a time that these structures were built prior to the existing uh, zoning code being adopted where some of the setbacks, design standards, parking, screening, landscaping, those requirements didn't exist at the time the structures were built. Um, and so because of that, you know, we're, we're literally at the property lines for the, for the building, um, and there was, you know, off-street parking was not a, a consideration or a factor in nineteen oh three. There were hardly enough cars to build the roads to the design standards we have today. So we do recognize that there's some nuances in the, in, in redevelopment of an existing site where it's not, may not be possible to check every single box of the zoning code in order to meet the spirit intent. Um, so we do suggest that it's, it's worthy of consideration that not all of those elements may be possible to be met considering the age and the time in which this, uh, structure and site was originally developed. So that's a little bit of the brief background. Um, the, the applicant is requesting C two downtown core commercial because that allows residential uses. Um, that is the intent that the, the owner has expressed to town staff is that the desire is to utilize the, the existing structure, um, with some modifications to bring it up to code, um, to use it for those residential purposes. And to, again, preserve the, the light industrial nature and use of the south structure. Um, so that's, that's kind of in a nutshell, the high level background relative to the site, the location, the parameters. Um, obviously your staff report goes into quite a bit more detail on the planning commission's findings for approval that are evaluated, um, on a rezone request. And I'll be happy to answer questions to those or speak to those, um, once we get to that, that portion of the meeting. But for introduction purposes, there you have it. And, uh, Mr. Luhann, if you have any, um, additional comments you'd like to add for your request, this would be the time to do it. Mr. Chairman, I'll give it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. Don't take all my chores from me today.
My apologies.
No, you're good. Um, yeah, Mr. Luhann, the floor is yours if you'd like to come up and make some comments.
The location has been um, in that use since the mid nineties. Um, I've taken, I took over the property in two thousand and eighteen. Our goal is to work with the town of Wellington to go ahead and bring it up to that code if, if you allow it in the C two and to do the improvements. So we can all move forward as a community together. And just to improve the site. So we can all feel comfortable about where it's headed. That's it.
Thank you, sir. If you would, Mr. Land, stay up if you would. Yeah, we'll probably have a couple of questions for you, I'm guessing. Um, if you don't have anything else, we'll bring it back to the board for any questions for the applicant.
I, I have a question. I, I did look at this building, uh, in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve and to purchase that whole parcel when it came up for sale. And my recollection at the time, there was that brick building and it had the office on the east side and there were two rental units on the sort of center and west. Uh, the, the staff reports suggested there was one rental, but that's ten years ago. I, I guess could get some clarification on what the status that section of that, that building is currently.
Right. And then, so without getting into too many details on the building code side of things, what the town has a record of is the equipment rental, um, building that was approved. I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't write down the date for that one, but the, the records for a building permit indicate that there was um, the equipment rental storage business and one residential unit. So that's what the, the building permit record shows. Um, if subsequent to that approval, additional residential units were created, that creates some of the concern that, that we're trying to address on the building code side of things. To make sure that those units have approved are, are safe and meet all the requirements for that residential component.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I have a question. So can you be more specific about what the challenges are in meeting the C two zoning? Like, is it landscaping that's the problem? Is it parking that's the problem? What do those challenges look like? Because if they're minor challenges, that feels different than like somebody's going to have to park five blocks away and walk home in the dark when they're renting a place. Does that make sense? I mean, nobody has to block, walk five blocks around here, but you know what I mean?
Right. It does. And, and so, you know, and, and I can answer the question and then, and then if you have anything you wanted to add to it. Um, so when the planning commission considers a, a site plan for, we'll call it a, a greenfield site, a, a new site that hasn't been developed before, the, the applicant has to demonstrate that they meet all of the requirements for for the, the zoning district in which it's proposed. And that is clearly outlined in our land use code, in our checklist and our application processes. So they know upfront what they have to meet. And this particular set of circumstances with an existing site, um, some of those requirements, like building setbacks, um, the structure isn't proposed to be removed or, or changed. So those, those aren't going to change. Um, at least it's not proposed to change. Parking was not a consideration at the original time this was developed. Our off-street parking requirements would for a new site would have to be satisfied, um, including access, two-way travel, parking spaces, dimensions and count. Um, that's it's difficult to evaluate how many parking spaces would be needed without knowing what uses are approved. And so we have a little bit of a chicken egg scenario. Street tree requirements, landscaping requirements, lands, or screening requirements um, are also factors that are typically evaluated as part of a, a new site development proposal. Um, and because this property is budded by, um, sidewalk and the right of way on two sides and, and a railroad right of way on the other side, there's really not a place for landscaping. It's possible to consider alternatives like planner boxes, hanging pots, other things like that to maybe achieve the spirit and intent. Um, but the strict application of the landscaping requirements would not be able to be satisfied due to site constraints. Um, I don't pretend that this is an exhaustive list because we haven't gone through a site plan review. Um, we haven't required the applicant to submit site plans, um, because he's not even sure if he's going to get the, the uses approved for what he desires to do. Um, and so it would have been a, a significant hurdle to overcome to prepare site plans based on an unknown approval for an existing site that would require a significant amount of investment to change what's existing in there today.
I guess I'm more, I'm less concerned about planner boxes. I mean, I'm going to trust that if you get this, you're, the appearance is going to be nice. You're right on Cleveland. If you've invested in this town, I assume that you care about this town, right? Like.
If you come in from the west to east, you'll see the mural.
Right.
That's, that was a twelve thousand dollar investment on my part alone.
Well, thank you for that.
To put that there when we did the, uh, the street program.
Right.
That was in twenty nineteen.
So I guess more I'm thinking of, like in here, it says something about multifamily. And I know that, that we have to consider uses. But I guess my, there's an ability to have some type of parking somewhere, yes?
And that was.
That's probably my biggest concern is parking.
There is. It's limited and Cody and we're working through that.
Okay. Is it, this isn't the first time we've had a situation like this, is it? Where it's an existing building that doesn't n- that's going to have some grandfathered.
It's, it's certainly not the first that we've encountered. It, it won't be the last. I, I will say that, that this site has probably more constraints and considerations than other sites that we've looked at. Just by way of some recent examples, um, even projects like, like Dollar General didn't have street lighting along Fifth Street for, and that was a subdivision, should have been a subdivision requirement that was never satisfied. And we made an alteration to change the parking lot lighting to adequately cover lighting along the sidewalk. Um, even on a brand new site, sometimes you don't, you're unable to meet all of the landscaping requirements due to utility conflicts, vision triangles and other things that you just, sometimes there's just not a way to fit enough trees to meet the requirement. And site conventional wisdom tells you that you don't require too many trees where they're going to crowd each other out or create other problems. So there are other instances that we've approved recently with some of those considerations. They're typically pointed out in a staff report. Here's the concern. Here's the challenge. Here's an alternative. Here's the concern. Here's the challenge. Here's an alternative proposal. Even right across the street, the barbecue love shack. There are no street trees there and street trees aren't necessarily appropriate in that setting. They put in some planner boxes and and some benches and some other amenities to meet the intent of this the site approval. So it's definitely not unprecedented and each site does need to have some level of consideration to make sure that we've substantial justice is done and it's reasonable for the requirements. And that that's really what we're proposing tonight. For the parking specifically, I I went back to the the aerial photograph. What the So what we've had some preliminary conversations with the the owner about is potentially looking at the space between the buildings to satisfy the parking requirements for the residential component. The south building has adequate parking, ample parking spaces south of the the building in the yard area. So this would likely be a one-way. We believe it is wide enough to have a vehicle parked and a vehicle pass through, so it could be unobstructed. We haven't designed it. I mean, that's a kind of a caveat that we're trying to understand what is possible here before requiring the owner to put that that level of detailed design and drawing into it. But that's the discussion that we've had is that there's there's adequate off-street parking within the standards for the downtown core to meet some of the off-street parking and the access. Mr. Lohan is also working on evaluating the ability to have vehicles pull through this space along the railroad. We believe that's possible and we just need to confirm final details in design. So it's that's the proposal currently, but not all the details are fleshed out because we're pending this case.
Okay. Thank you.
So what happens if the C two is approved and the requirements cannot be met for the C two?
Which requirement?
Any of them. Are you gonna be granting variances if they can't meet parking, if they can't meet landscaping? Are variances then gonna have to be requested and approved to meet those instances?
It could be depending on the the nature of the non-conformity. It could be a situation where it could be a variance request. And many times on a site, a specific development plan, we empower the planning commission to make those those considerations when it's within the land use code that the planning commission reviews, the examples being some of the landscaping alternatives considering locations or screening options that satisfy the intent of the land use code, even if it doesn't meet the ex- exact letter of the law.
Well, I'm reading this under the P U D and I think the P U D fits it better because an applicant applicant for a P U D overlay district may request modifications to the permitted uses of the underlying zone district to remove those uses that may be deemed incompatible or inappropriate for the overall P U D development. Conditional uses may be permitted if it is if it can be demonstrated that such uses meet the conditional use review criteria for the underlying zone districts. Which to me, I think it would be easier with the P U D to address issues that aren't allowed under the C two code. Am I correct in assuming that or not?
It's possible. It's perhaps a little unconventional to use a planned unit development for a single lot. I won't say that's out of the realm of questions. It wasn't an option that was considered by planning staff. We had conversations with the applicant and suggested looking at the baseline zone districts to for compatibility with the the comprehensive plan vision in the downtown corridor to align the base level zone districts with the intent of the district instead of creating you know, can basically conditional use type of scenario, which is what the old code would have pushed things to was a a transitional zone and a conditional use requirement. So we were looking for more of a baseline zone district that could be implemented and be consistent with the corridor as opposed to creating the unique circumstances that a P U D offers for flexibility.
I have some questions. I mean, I interrupted. Okay. So my confusion really lies in that we're looking at two distinct different buildings. We're looking at one, the the whole the whole thing is light industrial, correct?
The the current zoning for the entire
So we have four or five apartments in that that first building that lays on two eighty-seven. There's four apartments. Those four apartments were put in there basically under light industrial code, which one is confusing in itself, is why we would have residential under a light industrial zoning. The second is that you're asking for downtown C two zoning under for this for the whole the whole lot, which is
No, just just
Just the apartments.
Just the brick building, just the brick building. And the part and and into the part that's concrete parking.
Up to the point where the industrial buildings are. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, it's complicated.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Lohan. Assuming the C two is granted, you're able to make all the repairs and turn this into a four unit. And Cody, please chime in here. This will become a true multifamily, correct? It'll be it'll classify as a multifamily residence.
The under the building codes, it it may very well be a multifamily construction. The the zoning in the building code don't always speak the same language.
And I understand that. I guess I either found an error in our allowable uses or I'm really confused as to where the multifamily residential is allowed under C two zoning. This building will stand alone as a multifamily unit building. But the only residential allowed in C two is mixed use. So the way I'm understanding this, you would have to incorporate some sort of commercial use into this building for the residences to be allowed. And that's straight out of our land use code that was just approved. Land use code. We did both. I know it was a long year.
It's okay. I I believe Chairman Sardar is correct in the application of the the C two zone district, it does allow residential uses. I believe it's it specifies mixed use. And having conversations with with Mr. Lohan as the applicant here, we did go around and round a little bit with that very particular scenario. Mr. Lohan's been very candid with us and and his desire to create residential uses in this structure. And understanding that intent, what staff tried to do in those conversations was guide to a zone district that was the best fit for meeting the intent of the comprehensive plan, meeting as many of the requirements as we could from the land use code and not creating a a situation that could be considered spot zoning or leaving a, you know, a light industrial use that's not consistent with the comprehensive plan. And so we I I openly admit, and I I hope think that Robert might say or Mr. Lohan might say the same thing, that we've definitely struggled with that topic of how to get the right uses for a constrained site. And feel free to chip in if if you if you have something to add, but from staff's perspective, the light industrial zoning that's existing is not consistent with the comprehensive plan vision and doesn't make a lot of sense to be on that corridor. Going to a multifamily zone district didn't make sense either because there's no other multifamily zoning around. And so we didn't feel like the existing zoning was was appropriate. And the existing zoning doesn't meet the owner's intent. So we were trying to be cognizant of that. And we there's not another zone district that would meet exactly what is proposed. So staff presented the C two downtown core commercial option as perhaps the best fit to meet the owner's desire and intent and as many of the checking boxes for for the zoning element as we could without creating a situation and and the P U D is is a good comment. It it is a situation where that type of application is an option. I'll and I'll be honest, we didn't really consider it because of the size of the site. And we didn't want to create something that was so unique to that one site that it wouldn't have a lasting impact down the road. But it is something that is worthy of consideration. I don't want to rule it out.
Yeah, one of the lines in here under P U D, development for a number of dwelling units.
And and I don't I I handed off my code before I looked up the answer, but I don't know if the code has a a size limitation for a P U D as well.
Can you refresh my memory on what we recommended when we were looking over the zoning map for this particular property? Because I do remember it was a topic of discussion.
I believe it was, and I believe at that point, because we were already having conversations with the applicant, I asked that we not get into that as part of the future land use map or as part of the land use map updates. Because I didn't want that process to be conflicting with an applicant's request. So I did steer us away from that conversation relative to updating the whole zone map for the town because I knew this was coming.
So while you're looking and ponder on this, I guess play this out that we grant the C two, the renovations are made, it becomes a multifamily unit. At least in the building, is he immediately out of compliance by having a multifamily unit in a C two? And at that point, are we talking about variances? The site plan comes here, are we obliged to reject it because it's out of compliance with code? I guess the next level after this is kind of where I'm curious where this goes.
So there might be more than one thread there. So one of the things that I heard was would 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 variances be needed? And this goes back to other another comment also. Keep in mind that that the the variance process is not used to change the allowable uses on on the property. So a variance to from the code to say that we're just going to you know, you know, build some other structure that's not already allowed in the district would not be an acceptable variance for the Board of Adjustments to consider. Variances to parking, landscaping, setbacks, building heights, other dimensional standards of the code would be possible if needed. So that was one thing I heard. Now, Chairman, if you could go back and refresh my memory on your other statements.
I guess just once the once the process is complete, we assume C two's granted and the applicant's able to make the repairs. And he begins renting it as a multifamily unit. Is he? I guess a better question is, is he able to do that without it coming back before the planning commission again? And to what end when he's immediately out of compliance with the C two zoning? Because he would be with a multifamily in C two. Elaborate if, yeah, please.
I have a question. Yeah, no. So you mentioned an office in the same building. And then a uh equipment rental. Is that in the second building? Or that's in that same building?
The, oh, going back to the the previous approvals. The the previous approvals had the one residential unit and the equipment rental and office space all in that north building. I believe the south building was also potentially part of that approval as well. But it was a separate building permit and we were focused on the one building permit that was in question for this particular case.
So now we're not discussing, there's no office anymore. There's only the four residential.
Create four residential units within the north building.
Does that office space still exist?
No, I don't believe it does.
Okay. So I guess my question was, well, it used to be a rental space, which is commercial. And when did that get converted to another use?
It must have been converted right after the rental store went out, is my assumption.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not I have I've not been in that building since. I was just curious because that leads me to the question of because you can't build residential, uh new residential in the C two core. If it's pre-existing, you can continue that unless it converts to business and then because we passed that resolution, I know three or three years ago, that once it switches to a commercial as opposed to rented residential, it cannot go back to residential. So I I'm guessing that doesn't sound like it's already existent. That would not apply?
It it definitely creates some 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 confusion. And this was something that we've we talked about between staff and the applicant too. There were some changes made to the building. And the ownership has changed several times during that period. So what staff had was a record of what was approved with a building permit and what was approved in the by the planning commission and the board at the time as a conditional use. And that wasn't in alignment with the property that Mr. Lohan had purchased. So at some point in there, one of the owners made changes that weren't properly approved and weren't in compliance with all of the applicable zoning and building codes. And that's how we started our relationship with with some confusion. So it has definitely been a source of consternation for for staff and for the applicant to try to figure out a proposal of of best fit in a less than desirable set of circumstances that neither staff or the applicant has created. We're really trying to find it a way to to make productive use of the building and and comply with with the spirit intent of the regulations as best we can without putting too too much of an overly onerous requirement on the property where the only result is demolishing a a historic structure with with a, you know, beautiful mural on it and starting from scratch just to meet the requirements. We we really feel like this falls in a gray zone that is certainly not easy to matriculate as evidenced by the discussion tonight. We fully respect and are aware that that this is a very unique set of challenges that we're trying to apply a black and white code to.
Well, I was just gonna and this damn, I found it. Go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
So we've all been to Love Shack barbecue. We've been to Wellington Grill Papa's Table, Soul Square, Sold Jalisco. And again, they were approved earlier. None of them meets landscaping setbacks. There is certainly no parking available for any of those things. Now, again, pre-existing, currently non-conforming. The thing is that the fabric of this area, that's original. So I mean, and this is a question I brought up during the comp plan and the land use code, are the parking requirements, some of those requirements for a greenfield, a new development with acreage? Are we applying the same standard to a hundred-year-old building that existed, the infrastructure existed a hundred years ago? At that point, nothing, none of those empty lots in downtown Wellington, you know, next to the garage between Canac Automotive and Thistle can be developed because you're gonna end up with more parking than building and that's there those would just be empty. So I mean, I think we do need to look at this from the perspective of it's a hundred years old. There's clearly some changes that have occurred that are not doc- documented. But I mean, what is the ultimate intent? But I mean, it again, you can't, there's no way in some of these sites you can meet any of these requirements and not because you don't wish to, but they were never built with our code that exists now. So that's my thought, really.
So I have two things. One's a question. And you can answer this, Cody, in your discussions and going through what was possibly appropriate or would work for the intent. Was there discussion about C three, which I realize is the highway? However, it's highway one. It is that last property there on the outskirts. And I think we also discussed that as a possibility for some of the surrounding properties that are right there on highway one as well, which would then allow for the multifamily. So I'm curious to know if there was any discussion around that. And then additionally, I would agree with you, Tim. And correct me if I'm wrong, Cody, but if there were a site plan or plans to come before us, we would then have the option to comment and, you know, ask for certain commissions to be made to then be able to feel comfortable approving those, correct?
Thinking, thinking this one through. Um, cause the suggestion was. Possibly considering C three for the multifamily component that's a permitted use. And I assume that's correct. I was looking for it, but I don't want to feel like I'm, thank you. Um, the, one of the potential challenges is. And I, cause we did talk about C three zoning, if, if that was a good fit. I think what. Um, what I had recommended at the time was that. The C three zoning is not consistent with the vision of the comprehensive plan. And the C two zoning does offer some of the. Relaxed standards for parking, landscaping, other things. We'd still have to evaluate and it may still not fit everything to a T, but the standards are different. For this particular downtown corridor. Where those standards seemed more appropriate for development of the corridor than a C three. But there's not any adjacent C three zoning. So we definitely talked through it. The C three zoning also allows a broader range of commercial uses that. Most of those uses wouldn't fit the parameters of the site. Which was a factor as well. A lot of our drive-through. Uh, restaurant uses, other things are allowed in C three that are not allowed on this downtown corridor strip. And so. Balancing desires and intents with vision for the corridor and site constraints and, and realistic. Um, development opportunities were all factors that we've, we've talked about and, and honestly, I, I feel reached this conclusion. We haven't found a perfect scenario. And Mr. Lohan, if, if you want to speak to that as well, I don't want to commandeer that conversation.
No, we, we went over it. I went over the, myself, looked at all the options in C three and. We came to the same conclusion with the C two being the, the best if we could. Fill the box. That would be it.
So what are, what are the repercussions for being non-conforming? We grant C two, he is able to make the repairs and begins to rent it as a multifamily. What? What could happen is, I guess the, the point I'm trying to make is I don't want to set anybody up for failure. I don't want to grant the C two and then allow you to make all the repairs and start renting this to tenants. And then suddenly Cody leaves and we have a new planning director in here or something else happens with building code. And now you're forced to shut down. I guess that's, I, I don't know the, I don't know the building code and where this would go. Beyond just a zone change. Does that make sense?
Right. I, I, I feel the sentiment there is to not create a situation where. The owner or a future owner or a future commissioner staff is stuck with a.
Non-conforming building that we allowed to happen, knowing that it was going to be non-conforming.
Well, obviously we don't want to leave anyone in that situation. Unfortunately.
I'm less worried about them. I'm more worried about us, but.
Understood.
I have a question about, so Mr. Luna, if Mr. Lohan had come to us and said, I have a. Storefront in the front of the building and three residential in the back. That would feel like a different conversation completely. Okay? That actually feels like C two. I am not opposed to the C two. I think it is desirable. For us and that building being historic with the mural and everything. But I think what we're visioning with our town and C two is that downtown commercial with residential mixed in there. So bringing in a commercial piece to that. Might really actually make this an easier decision being it all for residentials. You're in a really weird limbo place right now where you have residential houses in light industrial. That, that's complicated. So I definitely think that we've got to zone this appropriately and go forward. That building originally historically was never ever designed for residential. You've made it into that and that's okay because we've done that in a lot of places in the, around the area. But if we're talking about preservation. And what it was for, it wasn't residential. So. I'm kind of on the line of saying, what could we do to make this a win-win for us and for you? For you to actually even bring in some commercial building. Bring in some res- rental income for you in a commercial aspect as well as residential. I think that would be a really great win-win. And we already know, you're right. We're not going to meet the parking criteria in downtown. That's why we have C two. It's, that's how, how that works. So I'm kind of laying that land out a little bit of, how can we make this a win-win?
Easy enough.
Okay.
I, and I just want to, I, I don't want to commandeer the discussion because I, we recognize how. Kind of tricky this, this particular situation is, but I also don't want to lose sight of the fact that we have. Advertised to public hearing and we have a lot of public comments. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Whether this is a good time or bad time, I don't want to cut the conversation off. I just, and I don't even know if there's anyone here that would want to comment, but I want to make sure that we. Don't forget that that was part of the.
Can I say one thing before you do that? Just one?
Just.
Go ahead.
I just want to know. I understand what you're trying to do and I understand what you said. On that same note, one of the other things allowable in C two is also professional offices. Which, I don't know what the going rate, but I was trying to find one. It was pretty pricey. So from a rental aspect, I don't know if that isn't a good equivalency. I don't know if that's displacing people. Or whatever, but I guess my question to you would be, if you're granted the zoning. Would you be amenable to finding a work around that doesn't immediately put you in non-compliance? Because I recognize it's a historical building and I don't know legally. All of our flexibility here, but I want to make sure that. You're not put in a really horrible position and that building isn't destroyed, right? That could open up a whole nother bag of worms. So I just kind of want to know where your flexibility is on meaning in the middle.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. Thank you for hanging in there, Mr. Lynn. You can take a seat for now. All right. Uh, we will go ahead and officially open the public hearing comments of this. Um, if anyone has any remarks to make, the floor is yours. No, check.
Sometimes it, it seems silly, but it's a very important procedural element.
Somebody can pop out of the bathroom.
So is closing public comments. Seeing no public comment, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this meeting as well. So, uh, Mr. Lynn, maybe that was preemptive. I should have kept you up there, I guess, but only if you have any other remarks. Is there anything else we should know or?
No, but if you're going back to the mixed use. Um, it's, it's possible. And it would probably would be the, the far east. Unit. That would probably be the most viable to convert. And for. Somebody, whether it's professional or not, to get the best use out of. So.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Appreciate it. Yeah. Thank you. No, you're good. You're for real. You're, no, you can sit. Thank you, sir. All right, Cody, anything else you want to discuss before we give it a last whirl?
Uh, I don't want to recreate the wheel, but I, I appreciate that this is not a, an easy conversation to have. You've done a marvelous job of thinking through some of the, the various challenges that the site faces. Um, I think, you know, Mr. Lohan has a, a good grasp of. Uh, the potential for C two with some, with the, that true mixed use component in the structure. We haven't had a lot of those conversations as to um, how to achieve that from a building standpoint, but we'll have those conversations if that's the planning commission's desire. Um, I do think it's, it's achievable. Um, we'll have to have some more detailed conversations on exactly how to make that work, but we'll certainly have those conversations. Um, so I just want to thank the planning commission for considering all of the. The various elements that were thrown at you on a, on a pretty tricky situation. And at this point I will stand for any questions and I can also help um, the commission as you work through your findings for approval. Um, if you have questions or need clarifications on those, feel free to reach out to me.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bird. Back to the board.
Oh, that's his. Racing me.
Please go ahead.
So would it be possible for us to make a motion contingent upon compliance?
Um, I think what I would offer is we've, we've heard and documented the desire to not immediately create. A question whether it's. You know, we, we don't want to leave anyone in a situation where the, the zoning is immediately out of compliance. Um, by making all four units of this structure residential. Um, I don't know that it's necessary to make that part of the motion because the planning commission makes a recommendation. To the board of trustees who will make the final decision. We can certainly reflect that, that concern and recommendation in our memo that goes to the board of trustees.
Does this come back to us at any point? With the ru- the remodels um, for a site plan review for anything else? Or once if, if and when the zoning is changed and granted, is it out of our hands completely and staff takes over?
My suggestion is actually for the latter. Um, and that's, that's my professional recommendation and request. Um, that when you look at a site plan review, you're evaluating. Building footprint in relationship to the site and setback requirements, looking at parking and access. Um, storm drainage, all these other things, sidewalk connectivity. There's. Because of the existing nature of the site and, and the proposal is not to change the building footprint. The proposal is to utilize this existing uh, historic. Structure, eyepiece of our community. And, and to the fullest extent possible with minimal modifications. So. And we've talked a little bit about parking and landscape and other things. My suggestion would be that there are a few elements that are related to a building permit that could impact the architectural. Uh, designs, uh, mechanical equipment, you know, whether it's rooftop mounted or placed on the ground. There's some screening that we can accomplish for that. You know, repairing a broken sidewalk if that's needed. There, there are elements that staff can, can easily identify in a flag. That would typically be considered as part of a site plan review. But the threshold for site plan review isn't, in my opinion, being triggered. Because the, the, the site parameters, the site size, the dimensions, those things aren't changing. Um, I really feel like a site plan review would be an additional level of scrutiny that's. Basically, we're going to find the same things we talked about tonight in terms of, we knew that these weren't going to be satisfied. We've gone through that process and now we've confirmed that they can't be satisfied. And the solution would logically be to approve that site plan with. A lot of alterations, modifications and other things. You know, other caveats and considerations for the existing site. And I, and I feel like that's a. Better achieved at an administrative level than a, a public site plan review process. That's my opinion. Um, it's not the end all be all. Um, certainly would can hear other considerations from the planning commission. And if you desire that to go through. A site plan review, then, then we can certainly do that. Um. So that's my perspective on the, on the situation.
I'm not so concerned at this point with the site plan review just because. How it's such an existing building and it's there. There's not much site planning that we can do. I would love, I think that C two is appropriate. But I would like to, can we make a motion that contingent that one of those units, minimum, one of those units is commercial? And. I don't know if it's tabling it. To find out what that looks like or, you know, we make, we, we, you know, that front unit, we want commercial. That would really fit the puzzle and, you know, we can dream about, wouldn't it be a great restaurant? But. Ultimately, when it comes down to it, hold on, there's a whole lot of other stuff that comes in with that. So. You know, we can daydream, but we have some reality here as to what that building could do. You know, it could be maybe a great retail space that goes really long back, but. I think that front unit is good for commercial and good for our downtown core too.
Dennis.
Sorry.
One word question.
Your chairman, that's your meeting. I'm about to make the takeover.
Commissioner, just go ahead.
Okay, if it gets its own C two and then he applies for a building permit. Will he be issued a building permit if he does not have a commercial space in that building?
We can confirm that the building permit would not be issued unless it complies with the mixed use nature of the zone district.
Well, uh, so just thinking about kind of some of the concerns raised by people here about, you know, and, and some of it's based on our. You know, table of allowable uses that, you know, multifamily doesn't fit in C two, but. There seems to be, the applicant seems to be amenable to looking at putting. Some sort of commercial office, retail, whatever, and have the mixed use that way, which would in fact fall within their. C two. Uh, so I mean, would that, that seems to be sort of, is it appropriate? It sounds to me like were that to come to pass, that it seems like most of the things that people have raised and. Questioned and were concerned about, is it going to be out of compliance immediately after we do this? I think most of that stuff seems to go away. Would you, would, is, are the other members commissioners sort of of that same feeling then?
I'm, I'm a proponent of at least one unit or one section or somehow incorporating commercial into this building. Uh, you know, there, there are going to be other restrictions just in our allowable uses that kind of define a mixed use dwelling. I don't think there's any way to meet a lot of these. But I think incorporating elite, incorporating some commercial use in that building would go a long way. To maybe making some of these other restrict, some of the other requirements maybe not quite as. You know, at the forefront. Now, not only are you non-conforming along with all the other things. At least it's a mixed use building. I think you would get some, I don't want to say sympathy, but you would get some understanding. That if some of the other requirements were met, at least it's a mixed use building.
Can I ask a question? This is going to be really, I, I'm a little confused. Like I understand what everybody's saying, but at the end of the day. In, in previous hearings where we're considering rezoning, we've been. Very restricted from a legal standard of even considering how it's going to be used. Am I wrong? So what is making this one different? I mean, I think the under, like with the permit, that was going to be my question. So I'm glad that you asked that. Obviously, when you're making a building, you're defining the use and you're having to make improvements, which has to happen in this case. Because of the nature of how this all started. Ultimately, our job in this hearing is not to determine his use. But to determine if the zoning is appropriate. We've made our desires known. And the, the zoning is exactly what it should be at C two. Based on the comprehensive plan. And the desires of everyone else, right? Or of the previous planning commission and the board of trustees is to build that downtown core.
I think the difference in this one is there's an existing building.
Are there, is it existing? Is it currently being used for the residents?
Not, not currently.
So then it's a non-issue. If it's not currently being used.
But we have an intended use on public record. I think that's the, kind of the monkey wrench in this one.
Am I wrong? I mean, I guess I'm, I'm confused.
I was going to say for me, it's less about what it's going to be used for necessarily and just that it complies with what we're being asked to give it.
Right. Yeah. I think we're over complicating it. You know, the desires of the planning commission at this point, sorry. Um, but ultimately in this hearing, our job. Is to determine if that's appropriate zoning. Right? So it is.
Not an appropriate zoning at all right now.
Why? It's not being used as a residence.
Into the existing zoning.
The existing zoning, light industrial.
Right. It's inappropriate. It should be a.
Completely inappropriate.
Right. It should be C two. So we're really actually.
Right.
Doing what needs to be done. And then if. The applicant decides he doesn't want to do the improvements, he has the ability to sell that lot, right? To someone and it's downtown commercial.
Right.
Instead of light industrial.
No.
Can I ask a question procedurally about if. It's unclear whether we're going to act, are we going to modify something here? Procedure, this will then go to the board of trustees and with the schedule and the public. Notifications. then go to the board of trustees and with the schedule and the public notifications, can you, can you tell us when it's supposed to be slated to go to the board of trustees for discussion?
Yes, and you're correct. The, the planning commission's recommendation will be forwarded on to the board of trustees. The board of trustees would hear that on Tuesday, September 27th, at their regular meeting. And it will be a, a public hearing that's been duly advertised.
So I guess that if, I mean, it's right there. If we say it's C2, needs to be mixed use, right? I mean, isn't that not where we're at? If we zone it this way, that is a requirement of that.
And make it a restaurant bar. I mean, eat whatever he wants within the C2 use.
It just needs to be mixed use.
Yes.
That would fit.
And Mr. Bird answered, yeah, Cody answered that question. When it comes, the building per, I guess the building permit process is the next check and balance to this.
There, there will certainly be a, a building permit process that has to be followed through. And I, I'll be honest, you know, Mr. Luhan and I have not had any conversations about what, what commercial uses would be suitable fits, knowing there's existing constraints on utility services and other things. We'll evaluate all of those things and we'll, you know, work with, with Mr. Luhan, the owner, to figure out what, what is a suitable path. I, I don't know that Mr. Luhan has a good idea for what types of tenants he might be looking for from a commercial nature, whether it's a bookstore, a restaurant, or an office or otherwise, that I'm, I'm not trying to be prescriptive.
I have 15,000 books.
Bring it, bring, if I can bring it back. I was just simply suffice it to say that I, I think that there's some considerations that the owner has to make too in terms of what the existing configurations might allow for that, that mixing of uses and town staff will have to be a partner in working with the owner to find that as well. There are some additional thought processes that we'll have to go through and then there will be a building permit process to achieve those allowed uses.
Okay, I feel like that's out of our hands at that point. All we can do is zone it appropriately. Okay, anybody else have anything else then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Findings for approval? I.
It's like we did them all.
You have to like say all the things now?
That was a great conversation. And I just want to say I appreciate that, that we really, as a group, just kind of are having a great conversation.
I agree.
And understanding. And I appreciate your patience as we work through all of that.
I, and I, I echo that sentiment. I, the one thing I would like to clarify, it was a great discussion and dialogue. There were a lot of issues that came up and, and were discussed. I want to make sure that when staff is preparing the planning commission's findings that are forwarded as a recommendation to the board of trustees, that I've accurately captured what has been said and what has been heard tonight. And so I, I wouldn't mind just for, for my purposes in terms of preparing that document, if we could go over the findings and make sure that I've checked the boxes and, and understand exactly what the planning commission is saying. So I, if, if you'd like, I can lead that in terms of what I've heard so far, or you can lead that point by point, however you'd like to proceed. I have short notes, but.
Yeah, I think your abbreviated notes will, will suffice for this.
Well, I, I heard a couple of times that the, that the rezone is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the intent of the future land use map. I heard the desire to stay consistent with the intent of the proposed zoning district being C2, including the, the mixing of, of commercial and residential uses. But to not allow only residential uses. We didn't really discuss the result of, or any adverse impacts to the natural environment. Staff's opinion is that there were very few. We have existing built environment to support these uses with minimal impacts on public facilities. We recognize that the number of tenants will have a number of service line taps and we'll have to sort through that. But we, we recognize that there's probably not a lot of dust, odor, noise, and other things associated with the residential uses or an office use. If a different commercial use was evaluated, we would certainly consider that at that time. But generally speaking, the C2 allowed uses are consistent with this corridor. We wouldn't expect significant impacts there.
Would it be fair to say that it would actually probably improve that property with the?
By eliminating the light industrial uses that are currently allowed?
Yeah.
I, I think that's fair. Is that, is there a nod of agreement with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm just making that note so I don't forget that what was said really well. Thank you for that. And same, the next consideration is material or adverse impacts to surrounding properties. That feels pretty similar in terms of the surrounding mix. And then I jumped the gun a little bit and spoke about facilities and services. The impacts to town services, police, fire, library, schools will have minimal impact with the addition of a few residential and one commercial use. I'm saying that is if that's, I believe that's what I've heard. If that's not the case, someone told me otherwise.
I don't see any, yeah.
Okay. And then the rezone is consistent with the recently amended comp plan lands use code for the downtown core area. I felt that that was stated, but that's, that's a true finding.
That's the, I think that's the prime finding.
And perhaps the most important.
The driving one, actually.
Okay, so that's, that's what I heard is the, the overriding factors for, for the findings. Were there any negative findings? I didn't note any, but I was also trying to keep up with the conversation, so.
I think the only adverse is more building related. I don't think it's so much zoning.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we discussed those at length and they were generally all related with the building and the, the uses, but not directly related to the zonings.
Okay, I'm trying to think of how that, because I think that's an important element because they've got a lot of discussion. Is it?
I think it's similar to that red house that it's just, that we did off I-25.
I mean, I think.
Right, it's a challenge.
We always talk about parking and clearly there's really no residential parking except for, and I don't know what the easement is or from the railroad to the building. I guess that would be, even though it's downtown, that's a complicated piece for residential. You know, where, where people are parking their home vehicles.
Yeah, I mean, the easement is, I don't know if it's 100 feet from the center line, but if you take an aerial look and you look at the, that whole industrial section, you notice that the buildings don't, that western edge, they're parallel to the tracks. They're not 90 degrees to the wall. So I think they're building right up to where BNSF said they could do that. So I'm not sure.
Then it covers the mural, so.
I think you said it best in that due to the historic nature of the building and the restrictions of the property because of when it was plotted, that certain compliance issues may, need to be looked at and alternatives. Figured out. I don't think it's a negative. I think it's just something to be aware of.
We're nothing.
Right. And I think that's true of anything that's going to get redeveloped or upgraded. Yeah. The whole downtown is that way.
Yeah.
But that's what makes downtown so cool, so.
Chairman, not, not part of our introductions and, and I, excuse me, Bill, because I forgot your last name, but Bill Starks, thank you, is with Mr. Luhan as, as a representative for the applicant.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bird. Of course, Mr. Stark, go ahead. If you would please, yeah, just for the microphone.
My history was that I've done some design work and so we got a CAD program and we drew the building up and part of those, part of those drawings are going to be used to give to the architects and then they will go from there to make these improvements. And I know that's beyond the scope of this particular setting, but I wanted to address this issue about parking along the railroad. We talked to some other property owners along the railroad who had made also supplications to, to the board or whoever. And we got with Larimer County Planning in Fort Collins and we tried to find out what those easements were and how they can be changed. But anyway, right now it's currently 85 feet from the center line and that's about exactly right at the end of the buildings. But when there was a spur line there years ago to service that lumberyard, when those spur lines are removed, then theoretically, we don't know this for sure, but theoretically, those easements go back to 30 feet by default. This is something Robert Luhan is trying to determine. And if so, that would really release a lot of space for residential parking along that. And it's from the photographs that you saw up there, there are cars parked there right now in that overhead photo that Mr. Bird could put back up if he wanted, but, but anyway, yes, right there. So those three cars are less than 30 feet from the center line of the railway. If we could ever prove or get the railway to determine that those, that those boundaries default back to 30 feet once spur lines are removed. As long as spur lines are there, then it's 85 feet or whatever the protective spur line needed. So it's just a little clarification.
Please keep us updated on that. Thank you, Mr. Little bit, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Starks.
I, I hope you have better luck dealing with BNSF than, than the town has because they're, they're prickly.
Thank you again. Mr. Bird, are you satisfied with your notes for findings of fact?
I believe so. Commissioner DeSanto, I don't want to be dismissive of some of the comments that you made. Are you in agreement or are there other factors that I, I haven't reflected?
No. I have no other comments.
I think the, the PUD comment was, was good and one that, that we didn't pursue that path, but I, I think that that is helpful for future considerations if that is something that the planning commission would encourage staff to pursue for unique situations instead of a baseline.
I read, just read that a little farther in the way you wrote it. It says 40 acres.
Okay.
You can use it for 40 acre plots.
Okay.
I've used it, you know, not here, but I've had experience with them using them in just one city lot too. But yours says 40 acres.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I couldn't recall exactly where it was, but I, I did believe that there was a, a size limitation based on the conversations we had when we were developing the land use code. I just couldn't recall it. Thank you for finding it. Any other of the comments on the findings that I need to reflect or add? Okay. And I believe I'm satisfied with my notes. Thank you for letting me recap those and thank you for the clarifications.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we have a couple of options for motion here to, to wrap this up. Anyone want to give a stab at it?
I moved forward a recommendation to the board of trustees to approve the change of zoning district classification for lot one and the north 15 feet of lot two, block nine, Wellington Place. First subdivision from LI, Light Industrial District to C2 Downtown Core Commercial District based on the findings for approval.
A second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Moyer? Yes, White House?
Yes.
DeSanto?
No.
Cholay?
Yes.
Knack?
Yes.
Sardar?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Last couple of things for the meeting. Cody, do you have any announcements other than what was discussed tonight?
The one announcement that I would like to make is relative to the updates to the official zoning map. We've had a series of work sessions to discuss that topic. Staff is putting out direct mail to some of the affected property owners. We're, well, I'd say some. We're sending direct mail to anyone who's seen a zone change as a result of updating the map. Most of those are in label only. So we do have a large notification area for the, our fours, the downtown neighborhoods. There's not a lot of significant changes that will impact them, but we want to make them aware of that title change so that they know that it's going on. So we'll be mailing those, those out and we'll be advertising the public hearing for October 3rd for the planning commission based on the last work session discussion and those recommendations. We'll also advertise the public hearing for the board of trustees for, for official adoption for the, the second meeting of October and the date escapes my mind at the moment. The second meeting is October 25th. So just want to let you know that that's, that's where we're at on the zone change or the zone, the official zone map updates is to begin advertising those, those public hearings for planning commission October 3rd and board of trustees 25th. I mean, we are sending direct mail to affected owners.
So is it one public hearing for all the zone changes?
The, the public hearing is actually to adopt changes to the official zoning map. So, so it's, it's not individual site by site properties. It's just that map on that wall is being updated and we're all agreeing that the new map is what should be reflected as the official zoning map for the town.
So if Sally Jo doesn't want her property changed, is that a different hearing?
It could be. It depends on the nature of the request.
Okay.
If it's the name Sally Jane or.
It's like trying to pick something that I didn't think anybody had.
If, if a property owner were to present information that said, I'm not sure why you were showing my property as, as this zone district, I'm actually surrounded by these other zone districts. I think that's more appropriate. We look at it and go, sorry, we didn't realize that does feel like a more appropriate zoning designation for that property. We can make that change. If it's, I don't like the zoning that's being proposed and the planning commission and the board said that feels like the right zone district for town planning purposes, we, the planning commission and the board might still adopt that map and then that owner could come back and make a request to change their zoning from what was adopted on the official zone map. So it can depend. I don't want to draw a line in the sand and say that an owner can't come and bring up reasonable comments. Like, I think this should be considered, then if, if those have merit, the planning commission and the board can consider them.
Okay.
Clear as mud?
Yeah, I just, well, I guess I was just trying to make sure I don't want to be naive and hopeful that we'll have this grand suggestion and nobody's going to question their rezoning. So I wanted to understand a property owner's course of action if they don't agree for whatever reason, valid or gut feeling or sentimental reasons or whatever, what that course of action looks like on their behalf and on ours, just so I understand what to expect.
Yeah. And I think maybe something else that might be helpful in that conversation is that updating the map affects all of town. And it's townwide. It's not a site specific consideration. It is a public hearing to adopt that, that document, but it's not saying specifically, we're only considering this one property. We're considering the town wide as a whole, all at one time to bring the map in compliance with all of our other documents and, and legislative regulations. So it's not a site specific where we're considering Sally Jane or, or whoever's property, but they can still come and, and make those comments. If it has merit and needs to be changed, that can be done at that time as part of the recommendation from the PC and the final approval from the board. If those two bodies say that, that we understand that you're not happy with what we're proposing, but we think that's the right thing to do, then that would put them in a position where they come back and apply for a rezone request at a later date. And that would be site specific for Sally Jane's property.
So I would just request when that hearing is coming up, access to some kind of a map where we can easily find that particular property. So we have a good frame of reference. I mean, I just want to make sure that I'm being very considerate of individual property owners. I mean, I just want to make sure that I'm being very considerate of individual property owners desires or concerns or whatever, and I want to be able to see on the map exactly which property is they're talking about. If that makes sense.
I.
If they're in the middle of a neighborhood and they think they should be C three, I just want to be able to see that they're in the middle of a neighborhood and that doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I'll, I'll put some thought into whether that's a, a a paper map is kind of hard for the scale, but maybe it's an interactive map where we could zoom in and confirm that's the property that they're referring to.
Yes, please.
I'll, I'll put some thought into how we can do that.
Thank you.
Google Maps.
You want me to Google the whole time? We're in a public hearing. I feel like that'd be.
Sure that, well, we're going to be looking it up one way or the other. All right.
Somebody get mad.
Here near there, y'all. Any other comments, questions, changes?
I have one comment.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So I'm just in, in, uh, in response to, I mean, I know I've raised this in the past and we discussed it today about you know, development in downtown core, would the PUD offer some? I mean, thinking about it, it's currently says forty acres. Is that a tool with that could in fact assist with development and even though it's a single parcel? Maybe this causes a ton of administrative headaches, just throwing that out because I know there are challenges to develop down on that corridor just based on how it's laid out. And is that an option moving forward? Like, oh, maybe this is, this does offer some flexibility which would allow some development that might not strictly speaking be able be possible. That's all. Just throwing that in. No answers required right now. Just throwing that out there is, does that have any legs at all?
I, it could, and I, and I've been through some similar examples where planning developments were used as the, um, the tool to address unique circumstances. Um, I've definitely seen it both ways and I'll, I'll go back and review some of the intent statements in my notes from when we did the land use code amendments to see what was intended and desired as part of that discussion. And I could even report that back to the planning commission in some way to kind of explain what, at least what I found from our, from our previous notes.
My experience with working with PUDs, I've worked with different sizes, forty acres, a lot or two. And basically how it worked, where I came from was the developer came in with a set of plans. He, he wasn't following any zoning whatsoever at the time. He just presented to the council what he wanted to do. And like here, it went through planning commission approval and it went through city council. So it's kind of a blank slate. A developer just presented what he wanted to do. And then planning commission or city council either accepted it or turned it down. The only thing I think that's an issue with yours right now is the forty acre. Or yours says forty acres or larger. I've worked with one city lot before under those circumstances, and it makes it a lot easier than working with the zone. He comes in, wants an exception for this, wants an exception for this. To me, why have zoning if you got to give exceptions to everybody every time they want something? Where PUD in most cases will get you out of granting varying interests and stuff.
Yeah. And I've, I have seen that tool used that way. I, the other, having gone through some other planning developments, the other thing that we can see on the other side of the coin is the neighbors get pretty upset when they say, well, the developer is just coming in and proposing a PUD so they can get away from all the rules that we were relying upon. And so it, it, it can cut both ways, but I think it's, we can certainly take a closer look at the, the criteria and requirements for where and how it can be used and try and dial it in some more. So it is a, it could offer another tool in the toolbox for a unique set of circumstances.
Food for thought. Anything else? Adjourned. Thank you, sir.